of Supervisors. This morning, we had a closed session meeting and staff was given direction. We will now start with the invocation led by Stacy Cooley, and then Supervisor Pacheco will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you again for all you do, for all that you provide, and for all that you're going to do as long as we ask you and have the faith to believe that you will do everything that you promise in your word. We give you this day and trust you to work in and through us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
It is now time for public opportunity to speak on any matter of public interest within the board's jurisdiction excluding items on the board's agenda. Testimony is limited to three minutes per person and thirty minutes total.
Okay, at this time, I will open public comment. Again, this is for non-agenda items only.
My name is Dora Crane, and I'm here, I just want to give you some information about Evergreen Memorial Park Funeral Home, whatever we want to call it these days. I've been fighting a battle with them since 2008. And September 5th, I ended up taking my boys out of there because it's such a mess down there. And I just can't fight with them anymore. I can't deal with it anymore. It's too painful to go down there and see the state that my boys' remains lie in, and all the leaders of Merced that lie down there, and from the inside of the building to the outside of the building, it's not being up, it's not being kept up. In 2008, this started when the new civic center was built, and Ellie Wooton was the mayor, Kathleen Caladani. We were meeting every month. Then we ended up taking fifty people up to Sacramento and lobbying up there for someone to do something. Well, something happened because things got cleaned up. By 2014, when it was time for me to lie my father to rest, he could not see putting his wife down there, even though my boys were there. My boy, one boy was there. He ended up going to San Anella. So I owned a total of five crips that I personally paid for with the cost of $30,000 back then. And so I've gone down there, I filed several complaints with the state funeral board. Sometimes there was a guy named Steve that would come once in a while and talk and do stuff, but things would get a little better, but now they haven't. Things down there, they started cremating people again, and then it took us three months to get them shut down because it was illegal. They were in there cremating people in a little storage shed above ground and put two big propane tanks right next to my sons, next to the wall. And there was black smoke always coming out of there. Finally, the fire department shut them down, I believe at the beginning of September, and the tanks have been removed. Because I couldn't even walk to my sons. They put the tanks on the sidewalk, so I couldn't walk to them. I had to go in people's graves to walk there. You know, and they want to blame a lot of this stuff on the homeless. I'm sorry, this has been going on for years, and it's not the homeless. They have sprinklers down there that wouldn't fit in my backyard and do any good. They have a hand mower now, the poor guys that work there. I'm not sure what can be done, and I understand it's a private, if it's a private place. But first of all, I don't think, well, you shouldn't bury your own kids anyhow, but to have to do it twice, and then to have to see their caskets again, take them out, have them cremated, and now I'm searching for a place to put them. But I'm hoping if you as a group can at least file a complaint with the state. I'm not a player anymore. I'm out. And they wanted to charge me $8,700 to take my boys out. They are not in the ground. You just have to unscrew the four screws, take off the marble, and break that little thing. $8,700, and they can't perform funerals down there. They're not supposed to be without someone that has a license. Just ten more. I'm looking for next door to come and help me get them out because they can't do it. No one down there has a funeral license as of right now. So I'm just looking for some help. If you can do it, not so much for me, I'm out, but for everybody else that's down.
Thank you.
Good morning Chairman Pedrosa, members of the board, CEO Hendrickson. Oh, and congratulations on being selected as the keynote speaker for the Veterans Day Parade. And Councils, County Council. My name is Aggie Freeman. I serve as the Assistant Governor for the Rotary District 5220 here in Central Valley. And I'm here on behalf of the Rotary Club of Merced Sunrise to extend a warm invitation to each of you and to the citizens of Merced County to join us for the 13th Annual Merced Field of Honor. On November 8th through November 15th, on the front lawn of Merced College on M Street and Yosemite Avenue. This powerful and patriotic display features hundreds of American flags, each one honoring a veteran, retiree, an active duty member, and a first responder. This is a beautiful and moving community service project of Merced Sunrise, and a place for remembrance, respect, and reflection. We also invite you to the Field of Honor opening ceremony at 2:00 PM on Sunday, November 9th at Merced College. Flags are available now for purchasing or re-flying online at mercedfieldofhonor.org, and community volunteers are always welcome. Proceeds fund veteran-focused community service grants through the Merced Sunrise Rotary. And once again this year, we are proud to host the Run for the Fallen on Sunday, November 9th, a free community event open to runners and walkers of all ages. We will begin with a brief ceremony at 8:45 AM to honor local fallen heroes, and we encourage everyone to sign up and to join us in the walk-run for that special moment. At 9:00 AM sharp, we'll kick off the 5K Walk and the 10K Run, and this year a Kids' Walk as well, starting and finishing near the Merced Field of Honor at Merced College Theater. Online registration is open now and closes for the run on Friday, November 7th at 6:00 PM. We extend our deepest gratitude to all of our sponsors, especially our presenting sponsors, Joseph Gallo Farms and the Peter J. Gallo Memorial Foundation, and our newest sponsor this year, the Merced Elks Lodge 1240, which is sponsoring our 9/11 tribute. Our sponsors generous support helps us ensure this free and important tribute continues each year. So on behalf of the Rotary Club of Merced Sunrise, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your continued support and recognition of our veterans and our first responders. We look forward to seeing each of you on the Field of Honor and at the Run for the Fallen. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Adam Reed, Attwater. I'm coming today because I would like to ask the board. I've been involved with a neighbor of mine in a little bit of a dispute that he's having with the county that kind of affects a wider range of people. Right now, it just seems to be targeted towards him, but it could branch out past that. In the county ordinance, 9.14.040, and kind of throughout that section, it deals with abandoned cars, abandoned dismantled cars. And it really doesn't have very much specific towards like classic cars. It relies on the state vehicle code for licensing, getting special licensing for recognition of a classic historical car. But I would like to ask if the county would look into possibly coming up with a little bit of their own definition for that rather than relying on that code because it says from cars 1965 and prior as the date. You know, we're a community of good, hardworking people that don't have money to go out and spend $100,000 to buy a 1969 Camaro. And what we do instead is we find deals on them whenever they need to be, you know, a bunch of work put into it. And that kind of happens throughout the county. There's a big, big community of car enthusiasts, and I would really appreciate it if you guys would think about updating that code a little bit so it doesn't affect property owners that are restoring cars, you know, that aren't trash, you know. So, thank you.
Good morning, County Board of Supervisors and public. I am here this morning not to complain about anything. I want to give you a heads up. This Saturday, we traveled to Los Angeles to the medical, the California Medical Association. They had about 500 delegates there. And I want to let you know that my husband, Dr. Sandoval, proudly was honored with a Frederick Pleasner Memorial Award. And this is a statewide, probably Merced's first ever awardee of this type. So I'm celebrating my husband. We've lived here almost a half a century, and we're still moving for some change in this county to make it better for everybody. So I just thought I'd let you know that this is a great honor for him. There were many people congratulating him, and it was a really fun affair. They even paid the room for us. Yay! Thank you.
Okay, the public comment period is now closed for non-agenda items. At this time, we have an update regarding unpermitted food vending and illegal dumping. I will now turn the mic over to County Executive Officer Mark Hendrickson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good and good morning. Illegal food vendors and illegal dumping have increasingly become bigger challenges facing our community as both result in direct threats to public health, safety, and welfare, and place operational burdens on local governments. As you're going to hear today, illegal food vendors operate without health permits, the most basic of proper sanitation or even safety inspections, which can lead to foodborne illnesses and unfair competition for legitimate licensed businesses. Illegal dumping creates environmental hazards, blight, and increased cleanup costs. It degrades neighborhoods, pollutes waterways, and undermines public health and community pride. Now, today, per the board's request, is a presentation that will focus on each of those issues, the dangers, and the strategies moving forward. First up is going to be Director Mark Memes and Deputy Director Amanda Duran, who's going to walk the board in public through the illegal food vendor presentation. And then from there, Director Nathan Bray will discuss illegal dumping. Mr. Memes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Mark Memes, Director of Community and Economic Development. As CEO Hendrickson stated, the board requested a few meetings ago for an update regarding the work staff has been doing to combat unpermitted food vending and illegal dumping throughout Merced County. So we are happy to provide the update this morning for the board and the public. Amanda Duran, Deputy Director of Environmental Health, will be leading the presentation on unpermitted food vending. But before she does, I would like to thank, to take a moment to say thank you to those who are partnering with us to address these issues. First, we would like to thank the board and CEO's office for their support. We would like to thank the local jurisdiction and their staff, the jurisdictions and their staff who partner with us while conducting enforcement in their cities. Thank you to the Department of Public Works, the Ag Commissioner, and castle maintenance staff who for stepping up to assist during larger enforcement operations when needed. Thank you to the district attorney and her staff who have worked hand-in-hand with our team on the investigations to help to work towards ending unpermitted food vending within the county. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to the Sheriff's Department who have partnered with us to assist in every enforcement and have ensured everyone remains safe. I would like to now turn it over to Amanda, who has been leading this effort with our dedicated staff. Their success has enabled Merced County to become a leader in combating unpermitted food vending, with counties throughout the state now following our lead. Thank you.
Good morning. I'll be giving you the update for unpermitted food vending. First, I'd just like to start off with, our unpermitted food vendors may not always be small mom-and-pop startups. In many cases, these are larger operations that bypass food safety regulations and engage in unsafe food handling and practices which create serious risk to public health. Merced County Environmental Health is committed to ensuring public food safety by enforcing safety standards, providing public access to inspection reports, and addressing unpermitted vendors who pose serious health risk by bypassing regulations. vendors who pose serious health risk by bypassing regulations. Environmental Health has authority to conduct unpermitted food vending sweeps under Health and Safety Code 11370, and Health and Safety Code 114393 gives us the authority to impound food and equipment that is contaminated or unsanitary. And under Health and Safety Code 114390D, it is a violation for any person to refuse inspection or to interfere with the performance of the duties of the enforcement officer, which is our environmental health inspectors. Our primary strategies will include increasing unpermitted food vending sweeps by 54%. Last fiscal year, we impounded equipment and food from 40 vendors who were operating and handling food very dangerous for public health. In this month of October alone, we have impounded equipment from eight vendors and have two more sweeps planned for this month. We will be hiring two new positions focused on unpermitted food vending complaints. The positions are posted, and we are actively reviewing applications. We'll be developing materials for community outreach and education. We do currently have some postcards and educational handouts that we do give out to members of the public. And we will, we are improving efficiency for enforcement actions in coordination with local law enforcement authorities. After each of our sweeps, we do meet and discuss how to improve and be more efficient with how we are out in the field. Dangers of unpermitted food vending. You'll see improper refrigeration, so uncooked raw meat and any other food that must be refrigerated shall be stored at 41 degrees or below. Many times, we go out and the meat is room temperature or whatever the outside temperature is on that day. So if you're in the summer, 100 degrees, the meat's just sitting, stored in trash bags at that temperature. You won't see handwashing stations after handling raw meat. Every time we go out, I have never seen a handwashing equipment, water, soap, even sanitizers at the minimum at these sites. Food stored under inadequate conditions, you could see in the background of this picture, there's raw meat. It's sitting next to cut produce. There's salsa in the trash can, so the salsa that they use to marinate the meat, that makes it smell so great to everybody, is being stored in trash cans. Also, this picture happened to be taken at a house in Winton that I was, I had gone to myself. We had opened the warehouse door, and there was about 20 people who scattered or hid. It very much looked like a human trafficking or exploitation situation. Also, you'll find that meat is being held at dangerous temperatures. Health and Safety Code 114002, hot holding temp, cooked meat shall maintain a temp at or above 135 degrees. We will check temps many times, and we'll find meat sitting around 82 degrees, kind of in this danger zone to create a environment for bacteria to grow, and that's how people are getting sick. Enforcement and penalties. We're working with multiple agencies to identify and collect evidence of unpermitted food vending in an effort to pursue criminal charges against offenders. We're exploring harsher penalties for unpermitted food vendors. We're finding that most of our unpermitted vending operations are not mom-and-pops, rather employees linked to a couple main persons who are also tied to drug operations. In Winton, we went to an unpermitted commissary with over 20 employees and a large warehouse in a backyard. This operation was tied to one individual. This one individual name is linked to many operations in multiple counties. We are actively working with other counties to gather information. He's exploiting his employees and paying them less than minimum wage and having them work and live in harsh environments. We are also, when we go out and do these food vendor sweeps, each vendor gets charged three times the cost of a permit fee along with our staff time spent, and that's if they come and pay. And that fee is $2,382, is three times the cost of a permit fee. So if they get a permit, $794, what less, just to come and get permitted. Along with enforcement, we will be increasing our education and outreach. The process to get permitted simply starts with coming into our office and discussing plans and goals. We could help people who want to do things right reach those goals. Creation of postcards to educate food vendors and residents about the dangers of illegal food vending and to identify whether vendors are operating illegally. Resources have been secured to expand education and outreach. We received the MECO's grant. This helps to fund education enforcement efforts for people selling and cooking food from their homes. I would advise the public to use caution before purchasing food from someone off social media pages, as we do receive a good amount of food illness complaints towards these vendors. Again, they may not know proper food handling or storage to serve safe food. If a vendor is permitted and selling online, like a cottage food vendor, selling breads and cookies, they will post their permit online. So just know that. We are in collaboration with our city partners. Our county executive officer hosted a roundtable discussion with city managers, and the cities agreed law enforcement will assist with our enforcement actions. We have partnered up with our sheriffs and their code enforcement officers in the unincorporated areas. We have recently done sweeps with the city of Merced, Los Banos, and Gustine Police Departments. We have also been in communication with the city of Atwater to do some sweeps as well. In summary, unpermitted food vendors pose public health and safety risks. I, along with my staff and the sheriffs, went out two weeks ago and found maggots in a tote holding, in a tote that was holding food. In that tote, there was tortillas, cheese, and pineapple, and all of which were covered in maggots that was being sold to the public. Our county is expanding inspections and enforcement. Collaborating with city and law enforcement is essential, is essential for my team to continue to have law enforcement support and go out with us to help us keep the operation safer for my team. Grant funding enables greater community engagement and education. Also, education outreach and recognition programs support compliance. We have awarded 119 facilities this year with the Award of Excellence. This is given to the facilities doing the right thing. You can find a complete list of recipients on our website. That concludes unpermitted food vending update. Nathan will be presenting on illegal dumping, and we'll save questions for the end.
Good morning, Board Chair and Supervisors. My name is Nathan Bray. I'm the Director of Public Works and Road Commissioner, and happy to present our update on curbing illegal dumping within Merced County. Much like a three-legged stool that would fall over if one leg was broken, in order to curb illegal dumping, one must consider three approaches: education, enforcement, and response. The county has identified several strategies in the three approaches, including increasing the penalties of cot, ensuring that folks are aware of all the options available to properly dispose of their refuse, and making sure that folks are aware of the See Click Fix app and how to report illegal dumping so the county crews can promptly address them. On the enforcement front, county staff through its Community Economic Development Department is leading the business license review. When county staff become aware of companies or folks offering to haul off refuse or debris, they investigate to see if they currently have a business license, and if they don't, they make contact. They educate those of the requirements to have a business license when offering those services, and also the penalties of operating without a license. As an effort to provide enforcement tools, this board may remember that back in 2021, Title IX of the Merced County Code was revised to include language to the effect that two pieces of identifying documents within a dumping could be grounds as evidence of responsibility of said dumping. Now, another tool the staff is working on is increasing the penalties identified in the Merced County Code for illegal dumping. Recently, counties facing similar situations have substantially increased their fees and penalties, and they act as a deterrent. For example, the counties of Monterey and Santa Cruz have amended their county codes to identify penalties in the amount of $2,500, $5,000, and $10,000 for the first, second, and third violations respectively. Staff is working on revising the relevant portions of Merced County's Code Title IX, and will present to the board some recommended changes, including the increased penalties. I expect to present those proposed changes early spring of 2026. Another enforcement tool the staff is exploring is the deployment of cameras to be installed at hotspot areas. The cameras would be installed within the public right of way to help identify vehicles and people used in illegal dumping. Next is the education component. Staff has been working with the refuse haulers to educate their customers of the bulky item pickups available to them at no additional charge. Folks would call and arrange with their hauler when they have bulky items that need to be picked up. And again, this service is available for no additional charge to the residents, and they are available twice a year. County staff has also been working with Merced County Regional Waste Authority on which items can be taken to the landfill free of charge. Those items include mattresses, electronics, paint, batteries, just to name a few. The RWA has produced some flyers, and we will be working on helping getting the word out, and I have some of them. I'll put them here. Additionally, county staff has met with representatives from the incorporated cities as well as the RWA to help ensure messaging education is consistent, and we are collaborating on how to make codes and ordinances consistent. Lastly, the county continues to have community cleanup days spread throughout the unincorporated county, or the unincorporated communities. These events are open to all unincorporated residents at practically no cost. The cost ranges from anywhere from between $1 to $4 a load, depending on the size of the load. And there are two remaining community cleanups left. They are, while I'm here, they are October 25th in the McSwain area, and also November 1st in the Planata area. The location and times and all the information can be found on the department's website. Sorry, lost my spot. Lastly, the counties continue to have the community cleanup days like I had just spoke about. The third leg of that stool that I previously spoke about is response. The county uses the application See Click Fix to enable reporting of many issues, not just illegal dumping. I often say that the county can't address what we aren't aware of, so please report those issues. Folks can download the app and report. They can report on our website. There's a county, there's a tool that folks can go to our website and report, or they can still call into Public Works Main Line, which is 209-385-7601. Staff will take the report, and we will create the report in See Click Fix for our folks. Some statistics to note, when compared to the last quarter of fiscal year '25, the first quarter of this fiscal year, the total number of illegal dumping reports was down by 7% for a total of 290 reports. And so, the first quarter, July through September, we've received 290 unique reports of illegal dumping within the county. The days to close out the work orders was down 71%. And so what this represents is from the day that it creates an issue within our system to the day that we do the work and we close it out in our system, we've improved by 71% in terms of the days to close, quarter-to-quarter comparison. And at the end of Q1, so the end of September 30th, there were only seven reports that had not, that had been created within the first quarter that had not been yet addressed. I had just heard from MCAG, who is in charge of RWA, that the five months of 2025, from February to June 30th, the county had picked up over 200 tons of illegal dumped materials. If you want to put this in terms of comparison of refrigerators, that's 1,600 refrigerators equivalent that the county's picked up just in those five months. The county is also looking into partnerships with community and faith-based organizations, as well as a partnership with USP and Atwater. And then lastly, in an effort to be more effective and efficient in response to cleanups, the county placed an order on a grapple truck to lift up large items and large piles with potentially just using one staff. Right now, multiple staff need to go out to address cleanup issues. That truck is expected to be delivered late spring of 2026. And then to wrap it up, curbing illegal dumping remains a high priority for Merced County and for the Department of Public Works. This county is collaborating with the cities and MCAG to have a more unified approach, and there are multiple strategies the county is engaging in, in the categories of education enforcement and response. And that wraps up our presentation, and Director Memes, Deputy Director Durant, and I are available for any questions.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the presentation, and I just want to get a real quick question. It seems like we are actively working on an educational process through this. Do we have successes that we can report out because of the educational process? Both, both, yeah. So I'm addressing both, and I have some about the hauler after this.
Yeah, I, from an educational perspective, I think getting the word out there that of our community cleanups that are available at practically no charge to the constituents. We, most of the locations are full in terms of customers coming to drop off stuff for the entire timeframe. And so I think that if we were not getting the word out there, people wouldn't know about it, and they wouldn't have that available to them. So I mean, that's the first that comes to my mind.
Yes, because I appreciate the process of educating first, showing them the permitting process and how to become legal. So now I'm going into the, with the Health Department. Are we seeing success? Are folks actually stepping up and getting the permits after they've been cited?
Every time we go out to a vendor, we do start off with, you know, introducing ourselves. Are you guys permitted? And we do give them education on how to get permitted. Sometimes they're employees, and they don't have a lot to start off with, and so there's options. You know, there's small cottage food operations and different things. We did have someone about a week ago come in, but most, usually we're met with, we don't care, take our equipment, we're going to come back bigger tomorrow.
They actually say that?
They have said that in not as nice words, but yeah. Yeah. But we do, regardless of how we're met, every time, we continue to give them the education and handouts and just come in, come to our office, talk to us. We'll help you, you know.
Well, thank, I mean, I appreciate that approach, but if they're not taking it, then we have to become with a stronger approach, definitely on that.
Go out and do, we did order like a tablecloth and pop-up and hoping to go out to the next mercato if it's here in time to be able to actually talk in a non-enforcement way to the public of, you know, these are, these are some other things that we could help with.
Oh, very good. Thanks. And then I have a question about the haulers. Are we permitting the haulers? I mean, how's that process going? Because what I'm seeing, and when I track it on social media, on Nextdoor app, Facebook, and a lot of them, where we're getting folks who are advertising they're hauling services, and their hauling services is less than what it costs to take it to the dump. And what I do like is maybe through our educational process, constituents are replying going, don't do business with that person because they're putting it on the side of the road because it costs this much to take it to the dump. They're doing it under the cost of taking it to the dump. So, I mean, and what I've noticed too is I'll start to track the advertising, just like we do some of these solar companies that say there's a Merced County program. A lot of these guys are coming out of the Sacramento area, Stockton area, and advertising into Merced for hauling services. So are we permitting these haulers? Are we, I mean, what's?
Yeah, in short, they should be permitted. They're required to be permitted. Whether they are going through the process or not, most of the time, that is not the case. There is, there are updates that we can make to our ordinance to strengthen our positioning as well. But in terms of the three main franchise haulers, those are permitted, but I think what we're talking about too are the companies that are willing to haul off your construction debris or your trash or your yard clippings or whatever. They should be permitted for hauling waste according to our code. And I'll turn it over to Director Memes. He's been reaching out on behalf of the county whenever we see those advertisements.
Yeah, because they are blatantly advertising. I mean, they're not even hiding it.
Our staff has reviewed all active business license and any, and then also start researching through Facebook Marketplace and other items, other ways that they are marketing their businesses. We have reached out to them to find out if they are, they're doing the work, and then also educating them on what, how to get permitted and to become legal. So we are doing that. Our staff is actively looking for those people. At the same time, we have also partnered and talked to legal trash haulers that will come to your house come to your house and take your trash and they are also helping us and giving us advice of how they think we should help move forward. So we're partnering with the legal permitted businesses as well as educating the ones that are not permitted.
Maybe you should just call them up, say you have something for them to pick up to dump and have them come to the county building and you can address it there at that point.
Yeah, a lot of the ones that are unpermitted right now that are trash hauling, they say the same thing, that when we ask, are you guys doing this? No, we're just seeing if this is a viable business for us to all, to be able to move forward into the permitting, but we are constantly trying to watch them as best as we can and then looking at who's on the Facebooks and who, where they're marketing to reach out to them.
Okay, because I, I mean, I'll admit, I've seen large bins being hauled out of Atwater and I have followed them out of town and watched them go down a dead end road, follow them in there and just pull out my phone and they end up making a U-turn and leaving. So, I mean, they're actively doing it and they're advertising on the side of their, their trailers. So, anyway, I just want to make sure if the educational process, I mean, we, we got to put some stronger hold on here because we've been educating these folks for five or six years at this point and it's time for us to, it's time to, people to learn a lesson.
And I, and I think from staff's perspective, that's what we're hoping for with the increased fee and penalties, right? If you get caught, it's not a slap on the wrist. It's, we're talking about significant dollars. And so hopefully that acts as a deterrent, but if they continue to dump and they are caught, it will hit them in the pocketbook for sure.
Right, and I re-appreciate our SETS team right now. It seems like those guys have been more effective here lately out of the Sheriff's Department than we've seen them in a long time and actually, it sounds like they enjoy their job and they're actively looking to help clean up Merced County. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Silveira.
Mr. Chair, Nathan, really quickly, I know that we updated that ordinance to say that if there's two identifying pieces of information that, that is, we can reasonably assume that it came from you. Since we've enacted that, how many times has it been used?
I'm not aware of any times.
Yeah, and so that I guess is probably a little bit of the frustration and I get it. By the time you guys are getting the call to go pick it up, I feel like we need to put a little bit more emphasis on looking and trying to find and see if that piece of information, two pieces of information are there so that we could actually enforce the ordinance. Secondly, I do too agree that when you come back with a, a different fee structure and the ordinance, look, fees are supposed to be meant to correct the bad behavior and, and I feel like that we're quite not there yet. And, and I know that we've, and it's been kind of our standard policy is, is we approach it from an education aspect first. We want to educate you, we're not ready to throw a bunch of fees at you to somebody who potentially can't even pay them and whatnot. It's, we're trying to educate it, but for the bad actors, we do need to go after them. And I think that that word travels fast. So if they're true in what they say that they're coming to our area to see if it could be a viable business, well, I'm sure that word would also travel fast that if you're not a legit viable business, then we probably don't want you doing business in Merced County. So that's what I had for you. Thank you for the update on that. And I know just from my experience, isn't typically, it's not when I find trash, it's typically when one of my constituent calls me, they're getting pretty brazen about it. One of the things that scares me is, is the fact that, you know, we got Santa Fe grade out there on the west side that they literally just dump it in the middle of the road. They're, they're not even like trying to dump it on the side of the road and, you know, you get somebody, it's dark, whatever comes down that road and they're typically not going that fast, kids do every once in a while. And then to come upon that and we're not just talking like you're running over trash and leaves, we're talking construction waste, refrigerators, stoves, those type of things. So I look forward to seeing that ordinance back. And then now, this is for Deputy Director Duran. This is, this is a part that I got an email from a constituent, I know you guys are aware of this, is she's asking herself, why the heck am I going to bother going through all this process, this permitting process? I, I go through it, I get my vehicle or my trailer or whatever it is inspected every year and these illegal food vendors are out there and they're doing it with no permits, none of, not the, the same amount of overhead, if you will, and she's asking herself, why? Why bother? If, if there's, if everybody's going to be able to do it, then why am I going to go through it? And I got to tell you that I don't necessarily disagree with her. It's a tough situation. They're in direct competition with the people that are doing it the right way and, you know, I get it, probably the cheapest thing you're going to do is, is the permit to be able to operate. I've seen some of these trailers, the amount of money that they have invested in these things doing it the right way, it's, it's a commitment, this is their livelihood. I, I think that there's a story, I just, a gentleman called me and this is why I think there's still some, there's some illegal activity that goes on with these things, is you got this guy shows up and it's, it's the big guy and he's got all kinds of cars that come in there. And then you got the little guy that shows up across the street and there's like 20 cars at this one and there's no cars at that one. Something's not adding up there. And if I'm, if, if these people are seeing it, I just think that, I know that we've had a partnership with law enforcement, with the sheriff's office, with the DA's office, there's more going on there. And then when it comes to confiscating the equipment, walk me through, if somebody got their, their equipment confiscated today, what happens? Is it, do we hold it for so many days? Once it's confiscated, it's gone? Can you walk me through that a little bit?
Yeah, so if I was to impound equipment right now, the person who I'm impounding it from, we go out there and we ask who's the owner, they're, they're never the owners, they're employees. Okay, well, the vehicle is the owner of the vehicle, is this the owner? Yeah, so the EHE management, we have collect, so we're able to ask law enforcement to run the license plates for us and get owner information. So a lot of times we'll say, Amanda Duran, is she the owner? She's, you know, her name came back as a license plate and they'll say, yeah. And we'll say, okay, so we're going to fill out this form, it's itemized of every single food, food and equipment that we impounded at that moment. On the back, it gives them 10 days to set up an appeals hearing to appeal why they think they were wrongfully or, you know, approached. They have 30 days to pay the penalty fee if they want to get their food, not their food, the food gets destroyed, but if they want to get their, their equipment out of But we always let them know, only the owner can come in. And so we, we have had someone come in and it's the same people, so I recognize them and their names and I'm the owner, I go, well, you told me you weren't the owner. And so I have a different name listed, so that person needs, needs to come in. And so if someone was to come in and to pay the penalty fee, we would get copy of their identification. Along with, they sign a form saying that they are aware that they can no longer, you know, serve food unpermitted, they need to get a permit, they need to do things the right way. So they, they kind of sign like an agreement that they won't do it, pay the penalty, then they could get their equipment. This has never.
Worked.
No one's ever came and got their equipment.
They don't come and get it. And, and so I guess as we're developing, I mean, I know we're doing the education piece, we're reaching out to the incorporated jurisdictions to work with them, I think all are great things. I think again, the penalty piece, if, if they're just flat out telling you, man, don't worry, I'll just come back tomorrow, that again makes me think, I don't know how many, how many plates of food they're selling, but to be able to sell that many plates of food where they're just going to go get more equipment and come back, we're not hurting them in the right places. And I don't want to be about hurting people, I don't, but they're obviously got a whole warehouse full of this stuff. And so if they lose this one today, they're back out there tomorrow. I literally have heard, and, and your guys' increased enforcement isn't going unnoticed. I have members from the public telling me that. But literally you guys are gone for an hour and they're right back there. And if they, if they bust them in the city, they just move right out to the corner of, you know, Pioneer and Center Avenue and just go on the county side of the, the street and not the city side of the street. So I would hope as we look at this, this whole three-pronged approach to everything that we're trying to accomplish here, you don't get the stuff back. And, and you know, and listen, again, we're trying to educate first and we're trying to tell you, but if you go out there and you say the same person, see the same person that you saw when you're out there a week ago, okay, there's your chance. You obviously did not get the message, gone, that stuff is gone, you don't get it back. I don't know, that's a question for the lawyers to answer, how can we do that? But it just, it's not fair to the local businesses, whether you're a brick and store, a brick and mortar store, restaurant, or if you are a legal food vendor, they're competing with you. They're, they're, and they have, they have hardly any of the overhead cost you, they're, they don't have restrooms, they don't have hand washing stations, God knows if they're, they're even cleaning stuff. I've seen the pictures on some of the stings you guys have done and, and I don't know how any logical human being could see these pictures and would ever want to eat at one of these facilities again. It's, it's disgusting, it's gross, it is, it's not being handled safely. So I want to encourage us, I want to thank you guys for the good work that you're doing. I appreciate this, appreciate this stepped up enforcement, but we obviously are, we've not struck a nerve yet. If, I don't care, drive, drive in any direction from this building on any given day and you will find illegal food vendors out there and it is not fair to, to our tax paying, permit paying residents who are doing all the right things. And I, I get it, there's an argument, well, they're just trying to make a living. In some cases, it's unfortunate because I've heard the word, they're indentured servants. These are, these are people that are, they got them working in unsafe conditions, not paying them minimum wage, anything like that. If we're really trying to change a culture, then, then we need to like try to help everybody up and this is bad guys taking care of, or taking advantage of people that, that are less fortunate. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of, couple of things, my colleagues have hit a lot of really, really good points. So one thing I will say is that I felt you were very kind today to the illegal vendors. I mean, I've seen the same pictures and we could have put 100 pictures up there of disgusting stuff that would turn these people's stomachs. I mean, food literally in a garbage bag laying on the ground, meat. I mean, it just, it just, you know, the people that are selling it don't really care about the person buying it, that's for sure. One, one suggestion that I've had in the past, and I'll say it again, is that when people come in, because, you know, to Super Silveira's point, is that you have all these people that are doing it correctly, right? And, and I'm not for more government cost and all that, right? But if, if the rules are that these people have to abide by the rules, then these people should have to abide by the rules. And so with that, my suggestion would be that first year people come in to get a permit, that, that they get their permit. The second year they come, they need to show that they have paid their employees, that they have a BOE account so that we know that they're paying their fair share of what they need to pay. You know, they need to be put in social security on behalf of their employees into an account, they need to pay their share. I mean, there's a lot of things. And so I would like to see us look at that, or have we?
Not gathering employees' social security numbers, but I knew, I know there is some other information, driver's license.
No, I'm not suggesting that, so when, when, when I pay payroll taxes or used to when I had the dairy, right, I had to send them to the state, right? So I filed a 943, I think it was. But anyway, so they, they have documentation where they're paying their employee benefits, you know, the social security, state disability, all that stuff. So you don't have to get individual information, you just need the company's filings, right?
I could see if we could look into that, if that's something we're able to ask for.
Right, and if they don't have it, then they don't get their permit. I mean, if we're going to be serious about this and force people to be legit, then let's make them legit and, and that's with all of it. Because they just have a significant, payroll tax is 42%, right? So if I'm running a restaurant, you know, my employees are costing me 42% more. If I'm running a illegal food vendor or even a legal food vendor, but I'm not paying that, I have a 42% advantage. Plus, I don't have the utility bills, the rents, the other things that, that the other businesses have. So at least let's try to make it even would be, you know, my, and I know you're doing that, but just that's a suggestion. But yeah, thank you. And then Nathan? Just a few. So one thing that still surprises me is that people have little idea that the landfill takes mattresses for free. And I have suggested at MCAG meetings to the, the director of Regional Waste Authority that we put together like a coupon that mattress stores can give to the person buying mattresses that says you can go to the landfill and drop off your old mattresses for free. Because I think, you know, the, the person selling the mattress doesn't care, but if they can give that coupon to the person, then they, you know, they, they know it's true or I have a ticket to do this. I find a lot of times in some of the stuff that we've done, like at our church, if it's free, but there's no ticket, people don't trust that, you know, somebody's telling, oh, you can go there for free, they don't believe it. But if you got a coupon, so I would make that suggestion to add in. And then, you know, and I, I know that we've kind of gone through a, a spot where the sheriff's department's understaffed and I know they've been able to hire people, but they're in the academy and they're not basically, you know, on the street yet, so to speak. But maybe keep in mind that, you know, whenever, whenever they get back to, to, you know, full staff, that we figure out a way to work with them a little better on the illegal dumps and, and get in some of the, you know, the ordinance that we already have, that if we find information in it that leads it, that we start doing that. Because until, you know, if I, I mean, if I, you know, give my trash to somebody to haul to the landfill, I think I'm done. Well, if I find out I'm not, if they don't deliver it, then I'm going to be a little more conscious of who I hire and what they do, so.
Sure, it's, especially with increased penalties as, as well.
Oh yeah, for sure.
If you get fined a hundred dollars, but you paid $10 to get rid of it, maybe that's not as much of a deterrent, but if you get fined $2,500, then you're going to make sure you're going through it right.
Right. And then do you have, and this is a little bit of an unfair question, but, so I'll give you grace if you don't know the answer, but do you know what it costs us to pick up the illegal dumping?
I think it depends on the size of the dump and the location. I mean, if it's close to our yard or if it's close to the landfill and we don't have a bunch of travel time. I mean, anywhere between, so right now it's usually two, two folks go out to address a, a legal dumping cleanup. And let's say they're going out to a specific site that's close to the landfill, I mean, that's probably, probably a good hour and a half, two hours worth of their time. And fully burden rate of those two individuals is probably close to, call it 200 bucks an hour for both. So at least, at least $400 for each instance and that doesn't include the tipping fees.
Yeah, or the, or the cost of the vehicle and, and the system that's sending them out there.
Correct, that is just the.
Yeah, so we could be more $600, $700 per.
Could be.
Yeah, and, and then if you do that times 290, right? It gets to be significant money.
We are spending a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of resources on cleaning up folks that dump their trash on the side of the road.
Yeah, okay. And then the, the last point would be, I know in the current contract with our three refuse haulers, they work with us on these community cleanups. You know, depending on how much we're spending on illegal dumping, I know a lot of people don't go to the cleanups because the line's long and, and I know people that have been in line, you know, and then they get there and it's closed, right? Because we have to make the landfill on time. So maybe, you know, look at, at doubling the number of cleanups, like do one in, you know, spring and fall in each community if, if that's possible.
Okay, that's, that's something we'll take a look at. You know, last year we threw, threw some additional funding with MCAG, we were able to perform two additional cleanups, one on the west side and one on the east side in June, just to help curb the issue. But it's something we'll have conversations with all of the haulers, all of our community partners to put on these events.
Yeah, and then the last thing, I want to thank you for the See Click Fix. You know, I don't know, I honestly don't know if that was your design or somebody else's.
It was not mine.
But, but I share that at all my MAC meetings, anytime I get calls from people, I share that, that app. And, and I use it because the response is quick and always. I mean, I, so you guys do a great job and, and keep promoting that with your, with your people because it really works and you do good.
That's good to hear, thank you very much.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to bring that up too. I'm glad Nav is sitting back here in the back with RWA. But it's not always true that they take mattresses for no cost. I had a constituent of mine who picked up about four mattresses that was dumped on the side of the road off of his property. He showed up, they charged him to do it. And, and he did it on my word that I said that they would do it for free. So what you said Lloyd is very similar. They want to have the confidence when they go out there. And even some haulers who are taking the mattresses out there are getting charged for it. So we, I, I don't know, maybe that's something that we do at MCAG, we need to address that with RWA. And I've brought it up there a few times at RWA to, in telling them, but they keep telling me that they take them for no cost. And another thing, this is for you, Mark, Mims, how many permitted haulers do we currently have in Merced County?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can get that for you by the, probably by the end of the day.
I, I would like to know that. And if they're not part of the franchise haulers, which I don't know why we're not having that conversation with the other haulers, are they held to the same standards as the franchise haulers? they held to the same standards as the franchise haulers? Because what I'm wanting to know is if you're just a permitted hauler, why would you go through all the work to become a franchise hauler? So I'm, I'm just, for a business sense or moving forward, I, I'd like to.
Sure. And so I think there's, there's, uh, two different, uh, governing sections of Title IX, uh, and really for two different purposes. The franchise haulers haul, uh, the residential, commercial and industrial waste that's generated on site, uh, from that use. And so we have three franchise haulers in three franchise areas. The, the additional haulers, uh, are hauling, uh, uh, refuse that is generated outside of your traditional use of the property. Um, I believe we have one, we may have two permitted, um, haulers outside of the three franchise haulers right now. Um, there definitely are a lot more out there. Um, that's what we're trying to curb.
But one of them is paying franchise fees.
One of them is. And I, and I believe that's the only current permitted with a current valid standing license right now. Outside of the, outside of the three main franchise haulers.
And, and I know we've had a discussion with one of them. Is that something, a further discussion we need to have to discuss? Maybe some of these permitted haulers? I mean, cause we're gonna hold them at the same standard. That's what I'm hearing.
Correct. Yes. I mean, we, we'll hold all of the waste haulers to the same standard. Again, the franchise haulers are, are operating under a different, um, not set of laws, but for a different purpose as opposed to these other haulers.
Cause they're more of a commercial intent. That's a continuous use.
Correct. It's used to, to offhaul your generated, uh, water or.
Food wastes.
Um, recycling, garbage and green waste if you're not in a waiver zone. And so those, those are a little bit, treated a little bit differently, um, than someone that generates refuse on an occasional basis and needs to haul it off.
Okay. So, so maybe as a board going through this process, we need to make those determinations a little more clear?
Yeah. And I think there's an opportunity for us when we bring back Title IX revisions as it relates to the penalty structure.
Yeah.
Um, there's an opportunity because that section that governs those haulers is also governed, governed by Title IX. So there's an opportunity to, to do a lot of cleanup of that, uh, section of ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you. Looking forward to those discussions. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Pacheco.
Thank you, Chair. This is from Nathan, too. Um, just is, is there or can there be, um, a mechanism? So like somebody dumps some trash on my property and there's no names or anything, but instead of calling the county, I just go ahead and pick it up and take it to the, to the dump myself, that maybe I can get a pass on, on not being charged for it? Um, that way, you know, I know you said it takes about, uh, four, five hundred dollars for the county to do it, but that might be a, uh, relieve a little bit of the county.
Yeah. That's, that's, uh, you know, we've had this discussion before. I think maybe not at this level, but, uh, kind of one offs. And, um, I think it's great in theory. There's some nuances that we would need to work through, you know, if, um, is that trash or rubbish that was deposited on your property illegally versus is it something that you generated? Um, and how do we go through and verify that, you know, the county isn't paying for, or the landfill is accepting free of charge, um, uh, rubbish and waste that was generated versus dumped. And so there's some nuances there. I, I, I think there's a lot of value to be had and maybe, uh, identifying a process. Uh, and that's something that we're, we're looking at.
Maybe just calling the sheriff's department, just getting the case number. And so you've actually made a report of an illegal dumping. So you get to the case number and I, I know something like that. But anyway, just an idea.
Possibly. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, that's a good point. And actually in District Three, I used my discretionary funds to set up a voucher program through RWA, through Department of Public Works. So if you schedule a cleanup in District Three, if you see something needs to be taken up, you contact Department of Public Works, we can get you a voucher to be able to go dump it for, for no, no, no cost. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of quick questions, although most of it's already been handled by everyone up here multiple times. Um, but, um, one thing, so in regards to the food, illegal food vendors, it says how to spot, you know, unpermitted food vendors, and that's the postcard or whatever. And then there's five different things on here. So there's no permit, operating roadside parking lot, no hand washing, no food storage, no fridge, transported without refrigeration. Is this, so if this is seen, is it just, you're gonna pick one of them and it's only one fine? Or is it if you do the no permit, and say they have, say they have none of this, then you find them like at the max at, which is like the twenty-five hundred per?
It's, um, it's just one. So if they're, they're operating without a permit, um, usually you'll see the other things coincide with it, but it's not per each violation. It, it reads, um, our ordinance reads, operating without a permit, triple fee.
Yeah. And, and, and I have a permit must be displayed. I just think that, you know, when we're talking about, you know, these fees, I think that we need to be a little bit, there's gotta be a little bit more of a hammer behind it. You know, it's, because again, as it's been mentioned, you know, it's not about punishing, it, it's not about, it's about educating, but then it is about, you know, making sure that we are punishing the people that are doing the bad things. Because, you know, they can't, brick and mortar can't compete. And it's really hard for them. And it's really, it's, you know, this board has spent a lot of time talking about quality of life issues. And this is really a quality of life issue when every single night, there's a huge, I mean, it, it almost looks like a parties, um, that are going on. Um, and there's food that's being sold without, you know, going through the proper stuff. And when they say that the pictures that have, that we've all seen, it's, they, they were nice, like Supervisor Pereira said, that, that today, because the, the stuff that we, we've seen is, is ridiculous. Um, in regards to, I don't have any other questions. The only thing that I would say is that, you know, I, I do want to say that I think we've worked really well with the incorporated cities. And we've started that collaboration with them to say, hey, you know, we're gonna do this, let us work on our stuff, and then let's make sure that it's all similar, right? And so a lot of the cities were kind of waiting for us to do it. And they were okay with us punting this until today because there was a big item on our October seventh agenda. But early spring is not acceptable to me. I, I think that this is something that has been going on for far too long. And so when we say we're gonna wait to early spring, we hope to have something done by early spring, I don't think that's acceptable enough for our, our constituents and the people in the community who are consistently having to face these issues. So I would, I would, I would recommend or challenge you to please have something, I mean, here we are, close to the end of the year. There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to have something at least by the first meeting in January. I, I don't see why that's not doable. Okay? I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna request that. Um, did you, okay. And then, um, the last thing, I do want to say, uh, and thank you guys very much for the presentations and for working on this. I do want to see us, but I do want to have this conversation with all this stuff that we've brought up. I, I think this needs to be back quicker sooner rather than later so that we can really address, um, these issues. Uh, because I think it's important that instead of having to continuously get the calls, um, on this stuff, it's, we're showing that we're actually doing something. And so this puts the ball in motion really, and puts the, um, it puts us on notice that, or puts you guys on notice that, hey, this is what we're doing. So we can tell our constituents that this is what's happening. Um, with that, oh, I also wanted to thank, um, uh, Mr. Bray for using the term rubbish multiple times. I don't think I've, was planning on hearing that today. Um, okay. So at this time, I will open up public comment regarding the presentation if there's nothing else from the board. Okay. Come on. Hold on. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, actually, good morning. Um, I had a couple of questions mainly for Amanda Duran. One is, uh, is the material for the public gonna be in Spanish and Mong in addition to English? Because I noticed that a lot of the clients are, look like they're Spanish speaking. Uh, also, um, I was wondering if there's some kind of a seal of approval that, that can be put on our site to say that they've gone through the proper channels to make sure that the food is safe. And then, uh, the last question of, for Amanda is, um, that I noticed that there's specific sites where these, uh, vendors are, and they must make some kind of arrangement with the property owner. So that's another avenue that I think should be explored in terms of how to approach this, this matter. Uh, I just wanted to compliment the, uh, Mr. Pereira. I think on the, um, the increasing the cleanups to twice, uh, um, a month, I think is something that would make it more accessible to have the cleanups. And then having the coupon requirement for the mattress vendors, I think is another excellent thing, too. And I like the vouchers from the discretionary fund that was brought up. Thank you.
And, and I think that the way that you get the seal of approval just by having the health permit, I mean, that's really what you need. And that shows that you're permitted to be there. Okay.
I got a lot to say. So my name is Melissa Morales and, uh, my significant other, Enrika, and I are here, um, local owners of a restaurant here in Merced, speaking not only for ourselves, but seventy other restaurant and business owners that have signed a petition that we submitted three weeks ago to city council. Um, and many more that were in agreement, although would not sign in fear of backlash from the Latino community. Uh, we know that it means, what it means to work hard to build something from the ground up, and we are proud to contribute to the community the right way. Um, we are here because illegal unauthorized street vending has become a growing crisis in Merced. For the past few months, Enrika and I continue to observe pop-up vendors operating in the Bank of America, empty parking lot after hours, non-permitted, non-inspected, unregulated, unsafe and unchecked. We just want to show up and say that we appreciate the increases of sweeps you listed in your strategies. There continue to be many more places, such as Highway fifty-nine, where they are in plain sight, not hiding, with no place to store food appropriately or wash their hands. We know this is hurting all of us on multiple levels. It hurts our local economy, on honest business owners who pay taxes, maintain permits and follow health codes such as us. We cannot compete with vendors who bypass all of that overhead. As I shared in city council recently, nationally, about thirty to thirty-five percent of restaurants fail within their first two years. In smaller markets like Merced, that number is even higher because we don't have the same customer base or safety nets as bigger cities. Um, so that means nearly one out of every three new restaurants here won't make it past year two, which affects our family, our livelihoods and our dreams going under. If we want Merced to thrive, we need to be intentional about creating an environment where those businesses actually have a fighting chance. We also know that it creates a serious public health risk. Vendors are handling and selling food, of course, as mentioned, with no sanitation, no refrigeration, no, no food handler training and no oversight. When people get sick, and they do, it is our emergency rooms overwhelmed, our taxpayers footing the bill and our community's reputation on the line. And last, this creates an environment of lawlessness, allowing not only vendors to set up in parking lots, but also the owners of the lots sends a message that we don't care. So again, thank you for now allowing that to be the case, not allowing that to be the case. Thank you for standing with us. Thank you for protecting the people of Merced, for protecting the legitimate businesses who invest in this county every day and stopping unpermitted vendors who not only exploit the system, but in some cases exploit human beings. Merced deserves better. We deserve fairness, safety, and thank you for your leadership. It won't look the other way. Thank you.
Uh, good morning. I'd like to speak as an occupational health nurse. Now I retired here to Merced County in 2021. I managed an emergency room, both in the Navy Hospital Oakland and also in the community hospitals. And we saw large numbers of residents come in with food poisoning and, and foodborne illness as a result of purchasing food from unlicensed vendors. And I'm sure if I went to Merced, uh, hospital today, they would tell me that's true for them in their emergency room as well. So when we talk about, Amanda talks about education, what I'd like to talk with the county board of supervisors is going to MCOE and coming up with education, our youth, and going out to the schools through the school nurse or through whatever educational appropriate curriculum that would be, and do some kind of a s- assembly program where we talk with the kids directly about buying unregistered, unlicensed food, food from unlicensed vendors. Let's hit it from both directions. Not only educating the vendor with that's unlicensed, but let's educate the community, um, about the risks of purchasing unlicensed vendor food. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Silveira, and then I have one more comment. And then, well, I'm gonna close. Go ahead.
There you go. Thank you. Uh, question for council. Um, I believe it was Mrs. Morales said, you know, what are we doing i- if, listen, I'm guessing Bank America didn't say, hey, come in, sign up, come use my parking lot. But at some point, if they're allowing an illegal activity to take place on their parking lot, as part of our ordinance, could you look, I mean, I don't want to, want to punish anybody, but I also like, at the same time, if, we can't fix it all by ourselves. The public is gonna need to, you know, A, stop going to these places and B, again, I think, uh, Director Bray said it earlier, if, we can't be everywhere, every second, all over this whole county. But if the public helps with part of that, is that a possibility to say, hey, if you, you're warned and you will, you continue to allow this to go on, um, is there a way that you could say, hey, there could be some, some financial penalties towards you? Because, and I'm just using Bank of America because I've heard that one recently, but some of these same spots are, they, they keep continuing to go back there. I understand some of those are like county right of way. Like they, they just park off the side of the road. But in, when they're going to an actual location, is there, could that be, um, looked at?
Mark?
I think Mr. Memes can answer that.
Uh, for the Bank of America, we have, and for other property owners that allow for unpermitted food vending on their site, we have sent notices of cease and desist with fines included in that. Up to the first ones are, for some of the property owners have been up around eleven thousand dollars to start. Um, so we are going after property owners in the Bay of B and as well.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'd just like to add to that, too, because I had some properties in my district where I, when I contacted the property owner, they actually said that they did not give them permission to do it, and that they are trespassing at that time. And they actually took steps of theirselves to either put barriers or something to avoid, uh, folks from parking in their area. And, but it's too bad they have to take those steps. But at the same time, they were trespassing. And some of them have been able to eliminate it. Others are still trying to chase people off whenever they park there.
And I, I think that's a, that's something that we should, um, look at, maybe, um, going further. Okay. The public comment period for the presentation is now closed. We will now move on to, has staff, did staff get enough direction?
Yes, sir.
Real quick. Okay. Um, we will now move on to the consent calendar.
Consent calendar items one through eighteen. Please note that items four, five and eleven require a four-fish vote.
Okay. At this time, I will open public comment for consent, uh, calendar items one through eighteen. The public comment period for consent calendar items one through eighteen is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor Pereira. Please call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. We will now have a presentation of the Green Light for Veterans proclamation. I'm gonna read the proclamation, then I'll ask, uh, Mr. Checkley to come up. Uh, this is proclamation of Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of Merced County have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Merced County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to, to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. And approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. An estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. Merced County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. And now therefore be it resolved. With designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Merced County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform, transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Merced County encourages its citizens and patriotic its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4 through 11, 2025. This is something that came out of the National Association of Counties four years ago, and it's something to highlight, you know, veterans coming back. I think last year, they had 300 counties across the country that participated, and they want to go up to 500. They're trying to get 500 to participate. I know we participated last year with our green light on the Courthouse Museum. This year, it's gonna be a little bit brighter up there because the building's really, really white. So it's gonna look like a spaceship, I think. But anyways, so with that, I'd like to have Mr. Checkley come up, and we'll present the proclamation.
It's Director Checkley now.
I apologize. Director Checkley.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Did you want to say?
Yeah, no, just the continued support from this Board of Supervisors for our veterans. Everything you do, reminder, we're gonna have the Merced County Veterans Day Parade, Bob Hart Square, 1:00 PM on November 11. What I really like about this is a lot of veterans just struggle with any recognition. When I deployed for the first time and was redeploying back to the states, I remember a lot of people were lined up, and they were like, thank you, thank you. And I went to my, my chief at the time, and I said, what do I say? And he said, you say you're welcome. And I think that's, that's, you know, it was a lesson, it was hard. I volunteered. I didn't understand what to say. But this, this, you know, the Operation Green Light is something that we can all, I really liked the last, you know, couple sentences there. We can all put a green light, and it'll be a symbol, whether you've served or not, of the support that this community has for veterans. Right? I assume, I know, there's veterans out there right now, either watching or in attendance here. I thank you for your service. It's our honor as the county veteran service office to connect you to those benefits in partnership. I think that's something we have to re, you know, restate over and over. Although we might not provide direct benefit to veterans at that office, we are connecting veterans and their dependents, as importantly, including survivors to pensions, individuals experiencing homelessness, to healthcare benefits through either the VA, federal VA, or through organizations like West Care that really serves homeless veterans within this community. So just want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and to all those veterans out there, and we'll see you November 11, 1:00 PM, Bob Hart Square. I drove by today. It's starting to look really nice out there. So thank you, sir.
Okay, we will now move on to board action, beginning with Public Works.
Items 19 through 23. Please note items 22 and 23 require a four-fish vote.
Okay, at this time, I will open public comment for DPW items 19 through 23. The public comment period for DPW items 19 through 23 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Pereira, seconded by Supervisor Silveira. Please call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. Next, we have Human Services Agency.
Items 24 and 25. Please note item 25 requires a four-fish vote.
Okay, at this time, I will open public comment for HSA items 24 and 25. Okay, at this time, I will, the public comment period for HSA items 24 and 25 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor Pacheco. Call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. Next, we have Fire.
Item 26.
At this time, I will open public comment for Fire item 26. Okay, the public comment period for Fire item 26 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor Pereira. Please call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. Next, we have Sheriff.
Item 27.
At this time, I will open public comment for Sheriff item 27. Public comment period for Sheriff item 27 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor Pacheco. Call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. Next, we have Community and Economic Development.
Item 28.
At this time, I will open public comment for CED item 28. Public comment period for CED item 28 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor Pereira. Please call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. Next, we have Workforce Investment.
Item 29.
At this time, I will open public comment for DWI item 29. Public comment period for DWI item 29 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor McDaniel, seconded by Supervisor Pacheco. Please call the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. Next, we have Treasurer Tax Collector.
Item 30.
At this time, I will open public comment for Treasurer Tax Collector. Okay, the public comment period for Treasurer Tax Collector item 30 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor Pacheco. Please call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. Next, we have County Council.
Item 31, to introduce an ordinance entitled Claims Against the County and waive further reading.
Okay, at this time, I will open public comment for County Council item 31. The public comment period for County Council item 31 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Pereira, seconded by Supervisor Silveira. Call for the vote. Please record the vote. At this time, I will open public comment for CEO items 32 through 34.
Hello, good morning, supervisors. My name is Humberto Sandoval, and I am a resident of the city of Merced, pertaining to supervisor of District 4, and I wanted to take the time to voice my disdain for the adoption of a resolution opposing Prop 50. The premise of adopting a resolution on a ballot initiative that is already in motion seems quite frankly silly. The idea that our county would oppose a special election on the premise of, and I quote, undermining independence and transparency and reducing the perception of reality or partisan influence in boundary setting seems like a big slap in the face to Merced County residents. The people of Merced County can and will voice their concerns on Prop 50, either in favor or against, but that is a decision to be carried out by the people of our county. We do not need our county-level government taking stances on ballot initiatives. Our board serves us, not the other way around. The board does not, should not, and will not tell us how to think or how to vote. Our local government must be focused on not playing games of partisan politics that we see play out in Sacramento and DC. What our CEO and supervisor should be focused on is improving the quality of life of Merced County residents. Why should we dedicate time and resources to a clearly partisan issue when we can be directing county staff to work on more pressing matters like the inevitable flooding that is bound to take place throughout the county this upcoming rain season? The many health disparities we face here in Merced County, the high turnover we see in county jobs, or how we plan to address the rapid population growth, Merced and in Merced County. Once again, voters will decide what they believe come November. Our county government has no business in influencing the upcoming election by taking a stance. I urge the board to vote against adoption of this resolution and to direct our CEO and county staff to work on more pressing matters for our county than to play partisan games. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Salvador Sandoval, and I come to you as a physician for over 40 years in Merced County, and as a former health officer for the county of Merced for five years. I urge the, the Board of Supervisors to remain neutral on Proposition 50 for various reasons. Primarily, it's a very contentious issue. There's pros and cons that are brought up at the state level and then federally. I think for the immediate board's concern is that we do want elections that are non-biased, but this, this measure is coming out because of bias in other states. And I think we're at a point in this country where we need to really be, let the public decide. Second is the, the matter of Assembly Bill 1441, which took the, the decision-making about districting away from the Board of Supervisors to put it into having the public decide, I think makes, would make this look kind of contentious and put, I think the Board of Supervisors in a little difficult situation trying to explain their actions of saying that we're against the, the measure that Governor Newsom's proposing, but then doing something different on, at the local level. As a physician, I've been concerned about the impact of Medicaid cuts in the patients that I've taken care of, and I think the food programs also that are, that are still with our government shutdown that are in jeopardy. I think all these reasons, I think we need to let the public decide, and I think November 4th should be where California residents make the decision on whether they're gonna support the measure or not. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or actually, good morning. My name is Jas Diaz. I am a Merced resident, and I'm also here to speak on the fact that you're taking a stance on opposing Prop 50. As it was said before, I don't believe this is something that you should come out to do a statement. You should leave it for the voters. And if you do want to come out and make a statement, I think something that is concerning that, that campaigning on opposing Prop 50, tomorrow we'll be bringing out Matt Gaetz from the Republican Party. The fact that this is a person who is not just like a speaker for the party and for the MAGA platform, but we have to look at his background. Do we want to support someone who has had allegations of soliciting sex with a minor while he had a political position? Is, is this what we're, we're standing for? And to take it that this event is taking place at the community senior center. And I understand that that is not something that is co-facilitated with the city, but that is something that we should be concerned. If you want to take a statement, make a statement about that. This person should not be in our community. And the fact that they are also campaigning to oppose Prop 50, I'm a parent, and the fact that Prop 50 is, this is a time where we are putting it to our voters. This is a stand, it's not for Merced, it's for our state, so that we have a say in what's, what's going on in our nation and our federal budget. You had people from different districts, from different departments, from mental health, they're telling you, healthcare is getting cut, food stamps is gonna get cut. How are we preparing for this? This is an opportunity for California to say, hey, we're on these seeds, we're speaking, and this is gonna trickle to our county because we're gonna be losing those federal funds. And why, why are you making a statement to oppose this? So please don't do this. Please speak, do your research on who this person, Matt Gaetz, is, and make a statement that this person should not be in our community. Thank you.
Okay, the public comment period for item CEO 32 through 34 is now closed. We'll bring it back to the board for discussion or motion. Supervisor Silveira.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, listen, I, there's a lot of issues that got brought up there that are really not concerning to Prop 50. We have zero control over what the federal government's doing right now. Really, my reason for opposing Prop 50 is literally because of AB 1441. You don't get to tell us, in one hand, that we want to uphold citizens redistricting because that's what the voters passed, but we're gonna put that on pause, and we're going to have a very untransparent, new districts that will affect our district. Our district changes quite a bit in this new election. Now, specifically, Merced County doesn't because we're encompassed in one congressional district, but it takes us from a, a district that is San Joaquin kind of southward, if you will, and little pieces of San Joaquin, Stanislas, Merced, Madera, parts of Fresno, to now the city of Stockton is in our district. I got no, I had no say in that, and I think it's very hypocritical because it wasn't the governor, the governor ultimately signed it, but it was our assemblywoman who pushed this bill forward with really, we had no, we, we didn't get noticed on this bill until it got marked up to be put into committee. That's when we got noticed on this bill, and we were a little frustrated. So it's, 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 maybe one might think it's tit for tat, but I think that it's, our governor's very disingenuous in that you're going to try to go against what the voters wanted by putting Prop 50 out there, but yet you're gonna sign a law that now singles out Merced County. No other county that surrounds us has this without even asking input from the local electeds on what that, what that law should look like. So that's where I'm at with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Pereira.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I gotta, I didn't plan to comment, but, but just the, I guess, the misinformation that I believe is out in the public has led me to, to think that I should. So the voters voted to have the commission, and the state legislator is usurping that will of the people by doing this. And, and it has not been a transparent system. Even assembly people had asked who grew the districts and were not told. They were told, well, the assembly did. But, but anyway, so it just, it's a very disingenuous, untransparent process that circumvents the will of the voters in the past. And, and I know votes change, and so, and so maybe this, this will pass, but I just believe that Prop 50 is, is taking away the rights, and, and, you know, the, the state had to suspend really parts of the Constitution to do this, and, and so I, I think that we need to send a message to Sacramento that you can't do that to us, that we deserve, we deserve transparency and a fair system, and, and I think Prop 50 kind of didn't, didn't follow those rules. And so that's why I'm in support of, of being opposed to Prop 50. Thank you.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason I oppose it is because we had the most competitive congressional district in the United States. The last one decided because it was within 180 votes of each other. That's a perfect, perfect scenario, and yet if Prop 50, and let's be understand, this is partisan. It is partisan that it happened this way. From the most competitive district, which is exactly what every congressional district wishes it was, we're taking this to completely be skewed another way, forcing our congressman to have to be more to the left so he doesn't get primaried. Let's be honest, we're not making the decision here. The coast is making the decision. LA County is making the decision. The residents of Merced County aren't, we're gonna vote, and it's important to vote. Let's understand, it's the population centers that are gonna be making it here in Merced County, or here in California. Look at Mo Doc County. Who's making? County, or here in California. Look at Modoc County. Who's making the congressional decisions for Modoc County in this redistricting? Marin County, coastal folks. Is that a representation of that congressional district? Not at all. This is in response to Texas. It says it on the vote. Why are we concerned about Texas? You know, Texas reaction was a Supreme Court decision that was made in response to that decision that was made? That's why Texas made the decision to do it, because folks weren't represented in the area. And yet, our governor, who is running for president right now, is making this reaction? Of course I oppose it. This is wrong. We're standing up for the folks who voted for the commissioning process, and yet we can circumvent the Constitution of California to redistrict and make these votes ourselves? That's why I oppose it. Has nothing to do with partisan. It's how I feel we're misrepresenting what the public has already put in place. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So I know this is pretty controversial that we're doing this, and I initially was, you know, not in favor of putting this on or even voting on it. And then, and I'm glad that it was brought up, it was 1441. 1441 was a bill that was passed in the legislature to force Merced County to have an independent redistricting advisory commission, okay? We didn't know about it. I went to Sacramento multiple times to testify against the bill, not against our member, but against the bill because of what it was saying. What it was saying was that what you guys did in drawing your lines was wrong. You did it the wrong way because you had too many public meetings. You had meetings at night, during the weekend, in different languages, multiple, online. We allowed for people to draw districts. It was, then we voted on them, okay? But every argument that was made to me in Sacramento, in Sacramento, every argument made back to me was politicians shouldn't draw their own lines. That's true. Politicians shouldn't draw their own lines, is what was told to me. And this is what's happening. So we passed a constitutional amendment saying we need to be more transparent, so let the citizens draw the lines transparently. Well, that's not good enough. So apparently, what's not us doing it the right way isn't good enough for us, but for Sacramento it is. That's hypocrisy. That's the definition of hypocrisy. Now, it was also mentioned, you know, we shouldn't be focused on some of this stuff because, you know, we're in a shutdown and all this other stuff. This proposition is costing us, the state of California, anywhere between 250 to 300 million dollars, 250 to 300 million dollars. Now, let me talk about this. We're in the middle of a government shutdown. CalFresh is running out of money, and some people will be without it by the end of this month. Families could lose food benefits by the end of this month. We have rural hospitals closing. Six rural hospitals that are closing, and we're focused on partisan politics? As opposed to really going after the will of the people and what the people are needing right now? And we're going to bicker over partisan government instead of actually helping the people that we're supposed to be helping? That's where I find issues with this. Again, if, when Sacramento is telling us that we can't be trusted to draw their own lines, then they should take a look in the mirror and make sure that they're understanding what they're telling us we're not good enough at doing. They're in the same position, but they're doing it behind closed doors. At least we did it in public. This isn't democracy. This is not democracy. This is democracy, because democracy is about choice, not holding on to power, and this is exactly what it is. You know, one of the other things is, under these redrawn lines, many communities, and as it was mentioned, especially rural ones, rural ones will likely end up represented by someone who's never lived in or even understood a rural area. That's not fairness. That's disconnect. When you have people making decisions, if you have somebody who represents West Fresno County, a majority agriculture area, from represented by somebody in the Bay Area, they are not going to understand the livelihood of those people in Fresno County. Same thing, I mean, Merced County pretty much stays the same, but the difference is Mono County is going to be represented, Modoc County is going to be represented by Marin County. The issues are completely separate and different. Tight races, as mentioned, force our elected representatives to be present, to listen, to engage, to earn your vote every time. And all this does is it looks like we're just protecting the power that people have. We're losing so much focus on the real reasons that we should be in this role. It's for public service, to represent the people that put us here, not to bicker over partisan government. We can have our differences of opinions, but let's really look at what we're spending the money on. If we have all of these, 59%, 59% of Merced County residents are on some type of social welfare program. Now, put that in perspective. 280 million dollars would go a long way to fix that. But no, we can't do it because we have to do this, and we're not going to let the people decide. We're going to let the people decide how it's going to vote, but as my colleague mentioned or said, this is going to be passed where the majority of the populations are. And we know that. It's time for the Central Valley to really stand up for something, because for far too long, counties like ours just are being brushed to the side. We're fly-overs, right? They don't need us. So we're going to tell them what they need to do versus letting them decide. That's not okay with me. I'm against Prop 50. I was against Proposition 1441, AB 1441, and it's mainly because the disengagement of all of our electeds and really looking at not what's good for what we're supposed to be doing, but just saying, hey, we're going to go against this president because he doesn't like California. That's not going to go very far. Why don't we really look at the issues that are facing residents in California? Why don't we put our money to real issues? And we're not doing that. And it's being lost on this. Nobody wants to talk about the cost. I did the math last night. A ballot for a registered voter in Merced County costs 11 bucks. 11 dollars. So if you're a registered voter, 11 dollars is what that ballot's going to cost you. I mean, this, for what? It's, this is what we, this is exactly the reasons why this is not good legislation. It's just not. So with that, I'll bring it back to the Board. Is there, we have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor Pereira. Call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes.
Next, we have Board Appointments.
Item 35.
At this time, I will open public comment for Board Appointment, Item 35. Okay, the public comment period for Board Appointment, Item 35 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor Pacheco. Call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. Next, we have Board Information and Possible Action.
Items 36 through 42.
At this time, I will open public comment for Info Items 36 through 42. Oh, Supervisor McDaniel.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to highlight Item Number 39, which is a bridge that has been closed for a long time in my district. In fact, it wasn't in my district, but after the last redistricting, it became part of my district, the Quinley Bridge, that has been out of service for over 10 years now. It's a long, arduous process through the state to get to this point. And again, we could have used some of that funding for this election. That could have gone for this, wouldn't even been a blink on the radar, and this bridge could have been completed. I do have another bridge that's out in my area that we need to get fixed, because folks are having a hard time getting to school, getting their services, goods movement, and everything else. Money can be better spent, definitely, in this area. But I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting this, and thank you, DPW, for getting us through the process to get this bridge fixed. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will open public comment for Info Items 36 through 42. The public comment period for Info Items 36 through 42 is now closed. I have a motion by Supervisor Pacheco, seconded by Supervisor McDaniel. Please record, or call for the vote. Please record the vote. Motion unanimously passes. We will now recess the Board of Supervisors' meeting and convene as the Board of Supervisors, as the County of Merced Chachilla Groundwater Sustainability Agency. At this time, I will open public comment for non-agenda items, as well as the one action item on this agenda. As a reminder, the non-agenda public comment must be regarding items within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, as the County of Merced Chachilla Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Testimony is limited to three minutes per person. The public comment period for both non-agenda and the agenda item is now closed, and we will now move on to Board Action as submitted by Community and Economic Development.
Item 1.
Are there any questions from the Board, or do I have a motion?
Chair Silveira, I'd like you to.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Silveira, seconded by Supervisor McDaniel. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This special meeting is now adjourned. We will now reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and at this time, we will have a Board Report, starting with Supervisor Silveira.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple things I wanted to highlight. After our last Board meeting, I was in Eastern Sierra's for a CSEC Executive Committee meeting over in Bishop. Bishop's a real nice place to go. It's just there's not a good way to get there. It's five and a half hours either way you go, whether you go through the park or around the horn, the bottom end. I will tell you, the only benefit that I saw of the government shutdown was Yosemite Park, where there's nobody at the gates, so there was no lines at the gates. It was like, literally just drove up and nobody stopped, so it shaved probably a good half hour off of my trip each way. So I also, last, I guess it was it last Thursday, the California Transportation Commission was in town, so I want to thank Stacy Guzman, the Executive Director for MCAG. We hosted a bus tour with some of the CTC Commissioners that morning, where we took them out, where they actually got to. You know, these folks, I know that they have meetings all up and down the state, but they vote on projects, you know, all big highway projects, small projects, whatnot. So it was nice to be able to take those folks out there and allow for them to actually see some of the stuff that they're voting on and where it goes to work. I want to thank all of our county staff that were a part of that, as part of that bus tour. And I was able, along with myself and the mayor of Merced, were able to kind of give some opening or remarks to the commission before their commission meeting. And that's all I have for you today, sir. Thank you.
Supervisor Pereira.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to share with you that last week I attended the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Study Workshop, and it was a lot of, it's a little more informal than our general meetings, and a lot of dialogue with partners that interact with us, from like Western growers advocating on behalf of the farmers. There was US Forest Service folks there. And anyways, one item that kind of came up was that there is funding available, grant funding, that might help us out at Castle to, I don't know, add more to the 49 million dollars that we have with EDA grants. And so I shared that with Director Memes, and he shared it with Tamara Spade. And so hopefully, we can attract some more dollars to Merced County to help us build that out. And then, I'd like to close today's meeting in memory of Carol M. Bonan, longtime resident of Winton, I believe, 85 years. Her and her husband owned a restaurant there for many, many years, and then after he passed away and she retired, well, and even during her working time, she was on the Winton MAC Board for, I believe it's 28 years. I didn't go back and look at the exact date, but I, you know, I believe it was 28 years. She also served on the Winton Water District Board for many, many years, and just a selfless person. I first met her when I started running for office and went to the MAC meetings. And there was a lady named Sheila Shamblin, who's also passed. And both of them would come walking out, and you know, when I walked out, because it's at night, it's dark, I'm looking behind the bushes, right, to make sure nobody's there, and looking across the street. And anyways, and Carol and Sheila would just come out laughing and giggling and talking with each other. And so one time I asked them, I go, don't you worry? You know, she goes, oh my God. She goes, we've been here so long, we've changed diapers on most of the kids that are, or the people that are here causing trouble. They're not going to bother us. And I just loved her spirit for Winton and always advocating. So, thank you.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Changed it up a little bit there. Caught me off guard. Yeah, I would like to say we did the CTC as well, California Transportation Commission. It's good that we were able to meet with these folks and have them get eyes on on the projects that are very important in Merced County, the Atwater-Merced Expressway, along with the inland port. It was good to see the folks where they approved the money to go there and to see exactly how this is going to work. It was very telling. Again, it was nice to have, you know, we have a really good relationship with Leigh Ann Eager on the CTC, but to go over the bridges in Merced on Highway 59, and yet the bus had to stop again. Last time it was Secretary Tavares who had to go over that. But the bus has to stop to allow other trucks to come over before we can go on it. And we remind them, this is a state highway that we're driving on, that these bridges are that unsafe. I'd also like to highlight Item Number 33. We did approve and authorize the Board to chair MOU with the County of Merced Deputy Sheriff's Association, as well as the Merced County Public Safety Services Unit, Units 14 and 10, and Unit 20. This Board does stand together with public safety, and I just want to say that I appreciate those folks for the time that it took, but we were able to come to an agreement and appreciate this Board, literally going into the budget. Love our budget folks, because we were looking at the pennies and how we can make this work, and appreciate everybody on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Pacheco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanted to thank Stacy Guzman, the county staff, for the CTC tour. I think it was good. It spotlighted Merced County and our needs. On Friday, I attended the rededication of the Merced PD South Station. They renamed it for Commander Joel Cortez. He was a longtime Merced PD officer and councilman. It's a well-deserved honor as Commander Cortez was a great community leader and advocate. And personally, he was a good mentor for me when I started my law enforcement career. So I want to congratulate the Cortez family on this great honor for the late Commander Cortez. I also, on Saturday, attended the Castle Air Show. Great food, great entertainment, great car show. I mean, there's just dozens and dozens of great cars to look at, and I want to congratulate Director Memes and his staff on putting on a great event. I also went to the Nut Festival at the Fairgrounds, celebrating our local farmers. Again, another great event. It just, and it was kind of a neat day, Saturday, there was just so much to do in Merced County, kind of had to pick and choose. I think that's great for our county that we've got a lot of things going on. Speaking of which, that night I attended the Merced County Sheriff's Office K-9 Dinner, where we were supporting and celebrating the hard-working service dogs and their handlers of Merced County. Again, another great event, very well attended. Just want to say thank you to them and their service. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Johansson, Mr. Hendrickson. All right. I have a couple things. I had the opportunity to go to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Gala last two weeks ago, last week. I had the opportunity last week to speak to the Chief Appraisers Association, who met here in Merced. I too did the bus tour with CTC, the Castle Air Show on Saturday. It was funny, Supervisor McDaniel has the reputation of putting on shows, and somebody said, is this your show? And he was, he was kind of taken aback. He's like, no, I don't do this. Then I went to the Nut Festival as well. Then I also want to thank Mr. Hendrickson and our first responders, the Sheriff's Department, the CAL FIRE, DEA investigators, who attended the First Responders Public Safety Mass at Our Lady Mercy School for the Kids. That is always a good time. And then also, finally, I wanted to, yesterday was Supervisor Pereira's birthday, so happy birthday Supervisor Pereira. And then tomorrow is Supervisor Pacheco's birthday, so happy birthday to both of them. So.
It's not your birthday.
It is not my birthday. So if you guys are going to do it to me, I'm doing it to you. All right. This concludes the Board of Supervisors' meeting for October 21st, 2025. The next regular scheduled Board of Supervisors' meeting will be held at 10 a.m. on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025.